Okay, I will call our work session to order of September 27th, 2022. And the topic for the work session is the Richfield Local Sales Tax Discussion. And I'll pass it to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I introduce tonight's topic, I just want to say we have all been shaken by the shooting on Friday. It was near the high school and it's a sad and scary time for our community. I just want to also assure you, we are meeting on all levels to address both the short term and long term challenges related to that. And also, a big thanks to everyone, I know you, Mayor, have been having a lot of meetings recently, for stepping up to partner with us on these efforts. And so, more to come on that. Like I said, we pulled this information together before last Friday. And while I don't think it's directly related, I do think that, you know, our amenities and parks and recreation are critical to health and wellbeing in our community. So, we were already planning to offer more youth programming, like the bike park and the expansion of the skate park. But if council is interested in going to next steps, we hope to look at these proposed projects and with a focus on how to support youth programming. And as we get into the presentation, I, we've got Chris Swanson, our management analyst. We give him the presentation. And then Eric King from the University of Minnesota Extension Office is also here and has done the study. We've got, we've got everybody here today. We got Kamud Verma of our Finance Manager. Amy Mark, our Recreation Services Director, will give us the details on the project. And then we have Ann Lucheski from LGN, our lobbyist, to help provide detail. So please ask lots of questions because tonight is really a conversation. We, we need a lot of input from council on this because we're early days. So a couple of things to consider as you go through it. We're asking on guidance on whether to refine the possible projects and look for authorization at the legislature in 2023. The other option is 2024, so that is an option. We're looking for feedback on those projects. Again, we, we just put the possible projects that we do need to do maintenance in those parks. But we would do further research, some engagement with the community, and another work session before pulling a list together for you all to pass. And then we would have to send that to the legislature by the end of January. Most of the projects are for major maintenance. And the only other revenue source is the, it's the liquor store profits, but that is very limited each year. And it's already, we've already got those projects programmed well into the future. And then property taxes. Some of the maintenance, as you know, is pretty urgently needed in the short term, like the pool liner, for example. The amenities are used by people across the region. They need to be regionally significant. And so that list we've pulled together are projects where the users are not just Richfield residents. And one of the advantages of the sales tax is that it better matches the users of the amenities with those who pay. And then finally, it's residents that have the final say on this. The projects will all, and the related tax will all be voted on. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
All right, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me here tonight to discuss looking at a local sales tax for Richfield. First, what is being discussed tonight? Basically, we're looking for direction from City Council and if we should get to pursue a local sales tax. I'll do a high level, you know, conversation about what a local sales tax is, what a local sales tax can fund, and then outline how we start that local sales tax process. Eric King here, as mentioned, is here to present the findings from the U study. And then we'll discuss sort of an overview of the projects and then the next steps. First, so what is a local sales tax? It's explicit in the state statute. Generally, cities are prohibited from implementing a tax. Most of the time you'd see, you know, state-sized tax or county tax. But there are special cases built within the legislative approvals where cities can use a local sales tax to fund specific projects. Basically, this puts a small tax on sales and services with its municipality. Generally, that tax is set at one-half percent. So kind of for that conversation, that is five cents on a $10 purchase. Next, what can a local sales tax fund? Oh, and feel free, if you have any questions, try to just to jump in. I know we'll go pretty fast to cover kind of a big, broad subject. So a local sales tax can fund up to five specific capital projects. That is currently what is in place per state, per the tax chair's standards. That is subject to change depending on what the, next year, who's chairing that committee. But as of right now, as it stands, this can fund a single building or structure, including associated infrastructure needed to safely access or use a building or structure. It can fund improvements in a single park or named recreation area, or can fund a contiguous trail. Also, as mentioned by Katie, these need to be projects of regional significance, which are defined as providing economic or use benefits to residents, businesses, and visitors from outside the city. Sort of continue that conversation about a local sales tax can fund. Within those projects, we also have to include an explicit length of time for the funding or for the tax to be in effect. I just included some examples of what other cities have funded with some local sales tax. That includes park improvements, that's Edina, a community center expansion renovation, Maple Grove, and a police station and public works facility, and that's in Oakdale. These cannot be used to fund road improvements generally. Currently, 43 cities have some sort of local sales tax in place. And then kind of a big question, so why are we looking at a local sales tax? So, a local sales tax provides additional long-term funding for future large-scale public projects. Based on some of the information we got from the U, we are looking at maybe a $2.8 to $3.4 million tax revenue per year. So that's a great opportunity for us for increased revenues we don't have. This also allows us to look at a local sales tax compared to, you know, traditional property taxes. So with this local sales tax, we were actually able to move some of the burden on to people who are not residents, recognizing that a lot of them do come into our city to utilize some of our amenities. So it helps share that cost throughout, you know, all the users of those programs. One of the really cool things about this is this is a very local way of moving or selecting projects. So these will actually ultimately go to the taxpayers for final approval at a referendum. As of right now, that could be either November 2023 or November 2024, as mentioned in the bottom. So now we'll get into kind of how we start that process. So as, as I mentioned, it's very explicit through state statute, kind of the timeframes and, you know, what we need to do and where we need to go. One of the first items that cities tend to look at is just kind of trying to get a guess of how much revenue they may be able to pull from that. So the city has entered into an agreement with the University of Minnesota Extension Centers for Community Vitality to provide us a local sales tax analysis. The Extension Office has done this for a number of other cities. It really kind of helps us set and understand what we're looking at. The LST study, Local Sales Tax Study, evaluated a number of items, including estimated taxable sales, estimated taxable sales for non-residents, just kind of a breakup of the city's tax center generally, or sector generally. And then really kind of what's important is an estimate for the total revenue per year for a local sales tax in Richfield. Now I'll invite Eric King up here. He'll just provide a kind of quick overview of their process and then some of the main findings from this report. Also, the report is attached to this council work session, so if there's any questions there, we can answer them here. I can run it. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you all for having me. As Chris mentioned, I'm here with University of Minnesota Extension and the Center for Community Vitality and with the Community Economics Team. And this is a study we've been doing for roughly the past five years or so. As Chris mentioned, about a dozen communities in the metro have entered into a contract with us to kind of perform this same analysis. Yeah, and so what we do is we look at tax data from the Department of Revenue, which is shared with us. And then we kind of take that data and figure out potential sales in each of the tax categories in the retail and service sectors. And from there, kind of calculate potential sales per each resident, which gives us kind of a benchmark to look at. And from there, when we look at the actual proceeds, we can determine if each category has a deficit or a surplus in it. Generally, when we find a surplus, that means that, you know, unless Richfield residents spend more than the average Minnesota resident on average, it kind of means that there's probably some cross hauling or some people coming in shopping in the community. So I guess a thing, important thing to note too, is when we do this, we try to err on the side of being conservative so that you guys aren't kind of over budgeting, anticipating kind of higher proceeds from taxes that are generated from this. So I think that's important to keep in mind too. Yeah, so let's see here. Some major highlights were about $650 million in sales were generated in Richfield. And the Department of Revenue said about $500 million of that would be subject to the local option sales tax. So from our calculations, we came up with about 55% of that would be paid by non-residents, which when we look at other kind of metro communities, that's, you know, kind of right on par with that. We've came with about 60% in general for non-residents. Yeah, and I think Chris mentioned, as part of our analysis, we kind of also estimate anticipated revenue, which would be generated from the sales tax. So in 2019, we were at about $2.5 million. And you can kind of see from the graph, the forecast from there, which would kind of, if the 2022 puts you, yeah, a year or two out from when you guys would be enacting a kind of tax like this. Let's see, so I think important things to really know is when we look at the kind of metro communities, looking at this, there's obviously a lot of cross hauling between communities, particularly when, if you saw in the report, a community like Richfield, there's a lot of workers leaving the community and also workers entering into the community from neighboring communities or other areas. So that again, just kind of increases the total proportion that non-residents would be spending in comparison to residents. So I think with that, I think we'll just maybe open it up to any questions you guys may have or, you know, if you guys think it's worth walking through an example, just to kind of better understand how some of the figures are calculated.
Yeah, I think working, walking through an example would be great.
Okay. Did you guys have a copy of the report available to?
I think it's in the email we got, right? Not in the, let's see here, I'm just looking to see.
It should be in the email. I think I can pull something up too really quick.
There's a bunch, hold on. Yes, it's in the attachment, 9/27/2022 work session. And Chris sent it yesterday at 5:30 PM.
All right, Eric, which one do you want?
Um, I think page 10, building materials, a good example for us to walk through.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, so here we're looking at the building materials category, which makes up about 12.5% of your total taxable and retail service sales. So in the line we see on potential sales is 47.2 million. That number is calculated by looking at the population of Richfield and then multiplying that by the average spending in this category for all Minnesota residents. So that kind of brings us up with, we would expect about 47.2 in this category. Then when we look at actual taxable sales, that number is at close to 82 million, which shows us a variance of about 35 million, and again, which is a surplus of about 35 million. So from there, we could say, well, unless we believe that, again, residents living in Richfield spend that much more on building materials than the average Minnesota resident, then we can assume that there's some non-residents entering in the community and purchasing these goods as well, which would kind of allow for that surplus to be created. So when we look at that, we can also see that this is a kind of big category that's also with a large surplus. So we can also assume that a large number of Richfield residents probably shop within Richfield for these building materials as well. So when we get to the bottom, we can see the capture rate of Richfield residents. We put that at about 83%. These are the numbers we kind of adjust up and down based on the category and based on the surplus or deficit. So here, we assume that there's a little bit of leakage outside of Richfield for people that, you know, maybe buy some of these goods in Bloomington or when they're off at work, shopping near their work. But also then we couldn't kind of assume that, again, a large share of this spending is from non-residents. So that's how we came up with 42.63 million. That's adjusted based on the resident share of 39, the total 81 minus the resident share. So that's how we come up with the non-resident share. And that again, counts for about 52%. So then we go, for each category, we will kind of make these same adjustments, kind of again, based on surplus or deficit, the type of category it is. We'll add up all these numbers at the end, and that's how we come up with the total taxable sales, the surplus, the deficit, and then the kind of capture rates of Richfield residents and the tax revenue that would be generated by non-residents.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or discussion items from council members? Sean?
Let me just generally on the taxes, that about the analysis of that, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just got kind of a few questions. One is like how the vote works if this were to be approved by the legislature? Like, do people vote up and down on the whole package? Or is it like a line item on those five projects?
Mayor and Council, so we're talking about voting for the residents or?
Yeah, but if this goes, if this goes forward and this is on the ballot, do people like check, I want these three of five projects? Or is it like, yes, I agree with this package, or no, I don't want this?
Yeah. So when it actually goes to the residents, it is basically a line item. So it'll be three separate, you know, or five, up to five separate projects. Each one is a yes or no, up or down. It's, you know, we can package certain projects certain ways to incorporate, you know, multitudes of stuff, have some pulled out different ways too. But basically, it's yes or no on, let's say, Wood Lake Nature Center as an example.
That's, that seems trickier. What, how does that go in other cities? Do, is it, do they sometimes get partial approvals of like the size of the community priorities and other items? Or do they tend to be all voted up or down?
Mayor and Council, I may turn to the city's lobbyist to answer that question.
Sure, council member, you know, there's not a lot of a track record under the new rules. And so just maybe some context, the rules around local option sales tax for city councils has changed, you know, repeatedly over the last 25 years. And it really becomes a measure of tax chairs and who's in charge, how they feel about them. And they tend not to be a partisan issue. You have Republicans and Democrats who like them and Republicans and Democrats who hate them for lots of reasons. And so we've seen over the last, say, 30 years, we had a three-year moratorium on them in Minnesota where no, no city could bring them forward. We've had years where it is one vote, like, here's the list, vote yes or no. We've had years where it's, each of them gets a separate vote. Under the argument for those tax chairs, we put that into place recently. That was for transparency, so the voters could actually have a decision like, no, I don't want a golf course. Yes, I want Wood Lake, no, I, you know. And there's kind of thoughts around that. Certainly, you as the council members would have a better sense of which way voters are more likely to go, but you don't get to change the stats, the state statute as it relates to that. There's also been years where, for many years, the city councils would put them on the ballot, voters would pass them, and then the legislature would take up the bill because only the legislature can grant a local unit of government the authority to tax of any type, including the property tax. And the legislature felt like they were over the barrel, like, oh, Richfield already passed it. It passed 70/30, we have to let them have it. So the legislature reversed that process, and that's what we're talking about now. You have to pass a resolution to say, we want to pursue this. We're going to put in a bill with Lieutenant Howard, Senator Wiltland, and we're going to get that bill passed by the end of session, and then it'll go to the ballot. And as the manager was telling you, the current state statute would allow you to pick 23 or 24 for the year it went on the ballot, if the legislature gives it to you. If the legislature doesn't give it to you, of course, you can't put it on the ballot. So there's many, many issues surrounding this. And because the House Tax Chair is retiring, Hallmark Court, no matter who has the majority, we're getting a new tax chair in the House. We don't yet know that, who that person will be and what their philosophy will be. And then in the Senate, we don't know for sure if Senator Carla Nelson, who has been a supporter of local option sales taxes, she's in the Rochester area, if she will continue to be the Senate Tax Chair, if there will be a change there. So, you know, you have to operate under the rules that Mr. Swanson's laying out, period. And they could change during the session. It could literally happen to you live that, you know, and there is a move by a bunch of cities and the League of Minnesota cities in particular, to try to get back to the one question that you're raising. It's a divisive issue, it was discussed a lot in the Tax Conference Committee last spring. So it's just, you're kind of, you guys have to just decide, what do we want to do here? Let's follow the rules. And then you're kind of, the rules change, or maybe they don't, depending on who's in those roles. And then you're playing within the rules. So you just, it's, it's an unknown process. I think that having the Extension Service here is really helpful because legislators of both stripes tend to want to make sure you did the analysis, understand, are you really offloading the tax burden to some of the non-residents? Are you just taxing yourself in any way? Because you can imagine a community that is, you know, one store with this many residents and everyone shops there. If they got a local sales tax, they're just kind of taxing themselves. They're not exporting it to anyone. Where you certainly have the arguments that you're, you're a host community for all these regional facilities, and the key is to fund regional facilities. And your residents are going to other communities and paying those taxes. And then people are coming and using your stuff, so they should help support it. And I think a lot of council members then, you know, often, as was mentioned by Chris, the incidents where people will think, yeah, but isn't that regressive? Well, the property tax is very aggressive too. This aligns better with your users. And so on net, your residents would pay more on the property tax because it's just them doing it alone than this way. So if residents figure that out, they tend to vote yes, because what they understand is, oh, you mean it's all those people from Bloomington and Edina and, you know, all around us who are coming in to do stuff? They have to pay for Wood Lake too, and then people kind of get it. But that's a whole nother step after you get the legislation passed. So lots of, lots of levers there, lots of unknowns. So the history on do they, have they passed? Some years they pass great, and they pass all over the place. And some years they don't. It is a factor of things out of your control. I would imagine 23 and 24 will be easier to pass than 22. Because of inflation, gas prices, you kind of, you know. So some of it's just completely outside of your control. And the parallel, I think, is to think about school referendums, where, you know, you hear some years they just passed, you know, 80% of them across the state, and other years like 20%. So you just can't, you know, have a crystal ball, really pick it right or really even know. And then they're all very different. It's what, you know, they're more or less likely to pass based on what you guys are going to do it for. So if you pick the things people really like, they're more likely to pass. If you say like, you know, you can imagine if you were trying to build a jail, like, how many people would go in and be like, build a jail? But, you know, versus Wood Lake, you know, where people really value that asset. So it's, it's just hard to make broad generalizations about how they've done over time.
Couple more, first off, that was, that was super helpful. And I think one thing that is striking is that we're like surrounded on all sides by taxes we're paying in Edina. Minneapolis and Bloomington are voting this fall, so likely that too. So if we're paying for their stuff, I hope they're paying for our stuff. I am wondering, you know, assuming this goes forward, we get the okay from the legislature, we're now at like the referendum coming up, what's the city's role in advocacy? Do we market this? Do we say, yes, voters, vote on this? Or do we have to be fairly neutral as a city, being like, this is an option available to you, and we don't care what you pick? Or we, you know?
Yeah, and the manager knows this well too. You can't legally advocate for it, and you can't use your tax dollars to do so. So it is not the public's trough to weigh in and pass the voters' opinions on something, right? But what you can do, very similar to the school districts, is you can provide educational materials. You can, you know, like you're explaining, what is this? What would it go for? You can have the forums where Amy comes and says, this is what it would buy for Wood Lake. You can, you know, go to the chamber and the Optimist Club and whoever all and educate them. Any group who asks you to come and talk to them, you can have meetings publicly. And then you can also help, you know, your city attorney can help with this. But you can do message creation, sort of like, what, what are we doing here? But as far as getting out there and passing the vote, or spending a dime to have a mailing that says, vote yes on blah, 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 no, you can't do that. So that's delineated in law. And if you got to that point, you would, Manager Rodriguez would very carefully follow the law. I have no doubt of that.
Okay, it's just interesting, I've seen a lot of Edina's materials about Brey Marriana. It didn't occur to me that they were neutral. But now that I'm thinking more carefully about them, and they really are just saying, this is what would happen if you were to vote this. But anyway, last question, very simple. How is the tax collected? Like, do we have to create new city staff to like manage receipt of that? Or is like the state just like send us a check and vote for it?
You can do it either way, but almost everybody lets the state do it. There's a few exceptions. Bloomington has wanted to do it themselves. I can't remember if Duluth still does. But mostly people, you pay like a little bit to use the Department of Revenue staff to do it. And that's kind of what most people want to do because they want to, don't want to hire new FTEs. But that would be the manager working with all of you's choice, so you would have the option there. Less common to do so yourself. You kind of don't want to be the tax collector there if you don't have to, is how most people think about it. We would recommend that to have the state do it.
Okay, go ahead, Simon.
Thank you. I had, I had a couple of questions, and thanks to Sean's good questions, I had a couple of follow-up questions. Just to be clear, we're free as electeds to advocate for any policy, correct?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to draw that distinction.
And you will probably get asked how you're going to vote for that.
Sure.
And, you know, like, are you, obviously you'd want the council supporting it and saying, I'm voting for it. You should too, but it's your choice, you know? So yes, you can, you personally can do whatever you want.
Thank you. And then I had a question. Do the numbers that we're seeing here contemplate at all any potential lost revenue because of an increase in taxes? Or is there any analysis of no difference? Are we actually not gaining that much by not having a sales, or not having a higher sales tax? Has there been any comparative analysis to our neighboring cities? Does that question make sense?
It does, and I feel like I saw research, and it, there didn't seem to be impact in, because of imposing a sales tax, that the sales went down. But I cannot remember where I saw it, so I will have to look at it.
You've most likely seen it relating to the Vikings and Twins Stadium debates. And this is when Hennepin County did the, you know, all of us who live in Hennepin pay for the Twins Stadium, and everybody else paid a lot less. What would happen, you know, is that voter going to drive to a non-Hennepin place? Are they going to go to Burnsville to buy their stuff because they have to be more for toothpaste in Richfield? And the Department of Revenue has studied this, and there's been a lot of studies on it. And just what the manager said, very little impact because, you know, the consumer is just not going to take on that burden to drive to a community to reduce the tax. And they're, and they're less likely to consume less because of it. There is a small offset. However, in theory, you know, your property taxes aren't going to be as high if you're paying for this solely on the property tax, the same thing. So that frees up that homeowner's spending on that end, right? So it's a, you know, the Department of Revenue has tried to do these analysis. And, and I think if you just ask yourself, have you really changed where you go and what you do based on what the local option sales tax is? And you probably haven't really thought much about it until right now as you're sitting here thinking about it.
And Mayor and Council, page 25 and 26 in the Local Option Sales Tax Analysis from the U actually has a study about that, and there really does not appear to be any impact from the implementation of a local sales tax.
No, thank you. I think that's real, really important to understand and communicate, especially, I think it's really compelling that we're, we're paying for the amenities in other cities. And if we're, we're missing out on that revenue, I'm, you know, I'm all for strategically engaging in, you know, something that'll generate more opportunity, more business for, for Richfield. But if we're already not doing that and that's not having an impact, then, then that, that's very clarifying for me. So that's really helpful. that's very clarifying for me, so that's really helpful. I had one last question. Oh, I saw something about one percent for apparel. Are we, would we be taxing clothing now?
You can't.
I, I didn't think so. I, I just saw, maybe I didn't understand that. It said one percent for apparel, and I was just confused by it, by that.
That was his total amount.
Of, of good soul.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Nope, thank you.
Right, and as the, as it was presented to you, that not, just because someone's making a sale doesn't mean it's taxable.
Yep.
And then which types. And so Minnesota won't allow a local unit of government to change the tax base. There are places that do that. This is not one of them. Like, you have to follow, we don't tax food, we don't tax clothing, you know, you have to follow it exactly. So there's no confusion there for the consumer.
Thank you.
Also, I'll just throw in, there's also, kind of, the, excuse me, with the online sales, there would also be, excuse me, if the tax were enacted, then at that time, online sales to residents living in Richfield would be collected. So that's proceeds that aren't included in this analysis or report at all, but that would be generated for you if that was enacted.
I have a couple of comments to read from our two council members that unfortunately aren't able to join us. So first, I'm going to read the comments on this from Councilmember Mary Supple. She writes, "Good evening, I regret that I'm homesick and unable to attend the work session and hear the discussions. Having looked over the information provided, I would like, like to give feedback. In general, we need a plan to maintain and improve our parks and recreation infrastructure. While small projects can be financed using grants, we need a longer-term solution. I support initiating the process to pursue local sales tax authority, option one. It is very important that we get public input regarding the projects that the sales tax will finance. There needs to be the discussion about our vision for our community center. Should we make a significant investment in upgrading the community center, or start over with a new one? I know that there are a variety of concerns, like if we could afford the ongoing costs of staffing a more expanded center, as well as the need for making ADA upgrades if we choose to simply update the current center. Community input and more information on the options are needed. As far as prioritizing the suggested projects, I would put Wood Lake Nature Center project at the top of the list, followed by the projects at Veterans Park. Both areas are used extensively. Then I would suggest making a decision about the future of the community center. That decision will impact if we have the financial means for additional projects. My lowest priority on the list would be the park trail system improvements. One additional point of discussion, do we have the financial means to do both Wood Lake and the community center projects in 2025 and 2026? Does one of the projects need to be pushed back?" So I'll just ask, is there any staff response to those comments? Katie?
Yes, thank you. And could I please jump in? So yes, we, we could not take on all three of those projects at once. We are just starting to look at this, and we want to get input on the projects first, so we can start looking at timing for the finance and how to finance it. I did pull together something, just to give you some parameters for the discussion, like very high level. And so the estimates on how much you would, if you did it for twenty year, I'm sorry, for ten years, sorry, twenty years, if you did the sales tax for twenty years, it would be, we're projecting about ninety-one million dollars. If it were fifteen years, it's about sixty-one point seven. Again, these are ballpark figures, but I want to give you some big parameters on this. And then, if you had a project total, so of the possible projects that we pulled together, because they meet the criteria, it's about, it's close to fifty million dollars. If you were to finance those projects, it would add, if you had a ten-year term, it'd be thirty-two percent increase, and it would be adding another fifty-one percent if you did fifteen years, and another seventy-five percent with twenty years, with debt service. So I, again, we'll get, we'll get that pulled together for you. We were, we were trying to work on this last minute and had, had other meetings that we had, didn't have a plan. So we'll get that pulled together for you, but no, we would like to stay within the, if possible, it's, costs us less to do debt issues if they're under the ten million dollars, which you're all well aware of. So we would have to time those projects to try and stay under that, that would be our first goal. And then some of these can be pay-as-you-go. We, some of the, again, we got to get the details of the project before we can start looking at the timing of the finance. But yes, I, we would have to look at that, and we couldn't do all those projects at once.
Any other feedback? Okay, I think those were the main questions. Any other staff response to Mary's comments? Okay. Then I have another one, feedback from Councilmember Ben Whelan, who unfortunately is still sick. Okay. So Ben says, "Sorry to miss tonight's meeting, but my whole family is sick, so I am home recovering with them. I eagerly await listening to the recording, because I wholeheartedly support the recreation infrastructure projects we're discussing, and I'm excited about the idea of a local sales tax as a funding source to help make those happen. I have several open questions about which projects to include, as well as the best strategy to get first legislative approval, then voter approval. For now, I'll simply share my support to move forward with the idea and get the ball rolling towards including in our legislative priorities for 2023 session." Thank you. So those are Ben's comments. Any comments from staff on Ben's comments?
I don't think so. Mayor, Council, what we're going to do now is just kind of look at the actual possible projects and just kind of discuss them. This is kind of what staff has worked to pull together the last couple of weeks to bring to this meeting. I'll turn it over to Amy.
Yeah, thank you. You know, just to kind of lay the groundwork, you know, all of you know, we have an old park system, and our liquor store profits have helped maintain it. But over time, with inflation and just the aging infrastructure, most of those funds are accounted for, for general maintenance, like fences falling, parking lots that need to be resurfaced. A lot of it's not the super exciting rec stuff, but it's the stuff you need to do to stay afloat. And inflation's a real thing with a lot of the recreation projects. A good example is the Augsburg Park tennis courts. The old quote I had from when I first started several years ago, it was probably in the four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, the quote that we got to resurface the tennis courts, this is just one set of tennis courts, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and we have a budget of five-hundred-thousand for the whole park system for the whole year. So you have to make tough decisions, and you answer tough emails and calls from our partners and, and residents, like, why aren't you fixing this? And it, it's not that we don't want to, we, we just don't always have the funds to do so. Also, we've taken on new facilities, such as the band shell. We've also had new, you know, new costs added, such as now it comes out of our budget to resurface parking lots, and the five-hundred dollars really gets stretched. So we have written grants and gotten creative, but when you look at the overall park system and its age, it does need major reinvestment to stay relevant and, and offer the best opportunity and wellness offerings for our community. So I really do feel careful financial planning now is going to help alleviate a lot of the difficult decisions that we potentially could have in the future. I think investing in the parks is really, you know, investing in the future of, of our community. So the top priority is the Wood Lake Nature Center building project. I know a lot of you have been very supportive and are aware of this project. But for those listening, you know, Wood Lake Nature Center is, was built in nineteen-seventy-one, so it's fifty-one years old. Our mission is really to connect people to nature and provide experiences to engage with it. We know from looking at our statistics that about sixty-five percent of people that come to one of the over seven-hundred-and-thirty programs we do there a year are from outside Richfield. So they're coming in, often from South Minneapolis, Edina, Bloomington, surrounding community. And we've all met people that love to go to Wood Lake, and a lot of times, they don't come from Richfield. But we do have a lot of challenges there. We have a high demand that we can't meet, because spatially, we have a small building. The building's old, infrastructurally, it, it's in rough shape. It was built pre-ADA law, so there's challenges for providing an inclusive experience to all visitors. So it's, it's also spatially challenging. We don't have a separate public space versus private space. So this project in particular would include a new building that would have specific classrooms for environmental education for students of all ages. There'd be community engagement spaces for meetings, weddings, you know, private and public events, new exhibits, indoor and outdoor learning spaces. We also would like to include a dredging project. With all the stormwater that is taken in and been added over the past decade or so, and with the reality of climate change, the trails there are easy to flood. And just so everyone knows, the, the watershed really is over from South Dale Mall, up to Highway sixty-two and over to Portland. So it takes on a huge watershed, and when every inch of rain ekes holes, about a foot of water at Wood Lake. So we really help prevent streets and homes from flooding in our community. So it's also an important asset for stormwater. So we like to include the dredging component, and successionally, it does fill in. It hasn't been dredged since the mid-nineties. We'd also like to include trail improvements, because of all the continued flooding over the years, our trails have taken a beating, so we'd like to, you know, regrade them, improve some of our bridges. So the overall project total would be about fifteen-point-one million, and that would include if we can find a ten-million-dollar support from state, federal funds. It would be twenty-five-point-one without partner funding. There's also opportunities, you know, this may go down as, hopefully, our project gets more traction and we're able to gain financial support through partners. The second highest priority project, I've called the Veterans Park Complex. There's a lot going on at Veterans Park. Our arena was built in nineteen-seventy-one. The trail system there is nineteen-eighty-nine, and our pool is nineteen-sixty-one. And it's original. There's been modest improvements through the years, but I, I do feel like some years were on borrowed time, particularly with the pool liner. This past summer is a great example. We had a leak as we were filling it, and luckily, we have a talented staff that, you know, broke through the concrete, found the leak, fix, you know, fixed the, the piping, which can be very expensive. But, you know, they've band-aided it for many years, but we do need a new pool liner. So aquatics improvements would include the pool liner, the zero-depth improvements, which would include graphics, updated feature, powder coating. Our concession area, we'd like to move towards having a non-porous ceiling and floor surfaces. And we also need a new pool boiler. So not exciting, but a much-needed thing to keep that facility running smoothly. At the arena, we need a roof for the rink, too. We also need a new HVAC system for rink, too. The fascia on the, or fascia, the kind of wood surfacing on the outside of the arena, if you go over there, you can see a lot of it's getting pecked on by woodpeckers, so it's starting to rot, and there's a lot of woodpecker holes. So we'd like to kind of resurface the outside of the arena. We also like to make a few more ADA improvements, including just the front doors. The park itself, you know, our trails really need resurfacing. We have a lot of roots that are bubbled up, so it's not a very smooth walk or ride if you're on a bike. There's a lot of holes in the surface. We'd like to see some vegetation improvements, particularly with purple loose strife in the wetland area, that's kind of starting to choke it out. So taking a, a look at the invasive species. As we took out the boardwalk this summer, we'd like to replace that with a accessible wildlife viewing platform, so people could engage with the wetland and still have that close proximity to it. We'd also like to include cohesive park signage that's bilingual, kind of throughout as many parks as possible. Right now, we have signs from, you know, different decades, but we like to have a cohesive sign look throughout the system. Our band shell, we like to include in this project irrigation, so we can maintain the area out in front of the, the band shell itself and gutters. The pavilion needs a new roof. We'd like to include a metal roof, which is more sustainable over the long haul, and improve some of the lighting at the pavilion. And lastly, the mini golf building was built in the eighties. It needs a new roof and some resurfacing of the fascia as well on the outside. So the total project cost for the Veterans Park Complex is about eight-point-one million dollars. But, you know, that would include aquatics, the park itself, mini golf pavilion arena, a lot of the amenities that people enjoy there. The third and fourth project are, are two parks that are regional, in a sense, you look at who reserves and utilizes our fields. It's a lot of our local athletic associations, but it's also, when they're not on the fields, we get a lot of outside organizations reserve them as well. So we know they're being used from surrounding communities. So the first one's Donaldson, and I was doing some homework on Donaldson. The park building was built in nineteen-sixty-four. It was renovated in nineteen-seventy-five. Most of the facilities in Donaldson, like, some of the fields and things were kind of renovated in the late eighties, early nineties. So they're definitely in need of some attention. The park itself, we like to resurface paths, make sure we have a new playground feature, that cohesive bilingual signage, and some new rink boards at the hockey rink. Courts need resurfacing, including tennis and pickleball, improve lighting, resurface the basketball court at Donaldson. The building itself is very old and not up to ADA standards, so we would propose a new building that would have indoor bathrooms, but also could be, include a reservable space. That would be a pavilion where people could gather and, and, you know, share food and things like that. It also includes some improvements to our fields, which are utilized heavily with, you know, things like lighting, fencing, some improvements to the turf that could extend the seasons on both ends for players, irrigation to our soccer field, and then resurfacing the parking lots. So the total cost for Donaldson is approximately around four million dollars. The other athletic-type park would be Taft, and the building in Taft is built in nineteen-seventy-four. The roof was redone in nineteen-ninety-six. The fields were all done in nineteen-seventy-four as well, much to that park was done. The trail resurfacing around the water feature was done kind of late eighties, early nineties. So this improvement package, we'd like to resurface the trails, which is, is badly needed. Again, have cohesive park signage that's bilingual, park lighting. Not everyone knows, but this park was built on top of a construction dump slash landfill. So this park needs soil amendments, because we would like to convert two of our ballfields to soccer fields, because we've had, just in skyrocketed demand for soccer fields, and we can't meet the demand. But to do that conversion, we would need to do some soil amendments to the park areas there. The improvements would also include, though, improvements to some of the ballfields, fencing, dugouts, some turf, improved turf to, again, elongate seasons. The building, since it is nineteen-seventy-four originally put up, we'd like to, again, similar to Donaldson, a style building that would provide bathroom facilities, but also like a pavilion that could be rented, and people could have picnics and things like that. Also, we have two lots at Taft. We have the south and kind of the west parking lots. Both of those would need to be resurfaced. This is a more expensive project, mainly because when you get into soil amendments, the cost can go up considerably. So this one is nine-point-five-three, and you just don't know what, you know, what's going to come out of the soil amendments and that true cost. The next project is just general park trail improvements, you know, throughout the system, taking a look at our trails that are used for connecting with some of our regional trail systems. Good examples, Adams Hill, that connects into Three Rivers Park Trail. You hit our trail, and it's, it's not the same quality. So we like to provide, you know, a smooth, graded surface, so improvement to that. Also, we've seen a nice increase of special event permit requests. We know people are coming in to use our trails for five Ks and walks and fundraisers and like that. So looking at some of those trails that are Um, so looking at some of those trails that are probably hit the hardest with events and resurfacing them, looking at solar lighting, again cohesive trail signage, that's bilingual. Uh, increased vegetation plantings and improvements. We've had a lot of tree loss, as you know, throughout, particularly this past year due to Emerald Ash Bore. So targeting some of these trail systems with new trees as well. So the total would be four point two three million. And then lastly, um, you know, this one is the last one to add, so I don't necessarily think it's reflected in the the priority order, um, but the community center. And for those that don't know, the Richfield Community Center, what's the county, Hennepin County Library? It was built in nineteen sixty-one and it served as a county library to nineteen seventy-four. Became a community center. Um, the city acquired it from the county in nineteen seventy-five. And uh, you know, it is an older building and some of the the needs of that building, waterproofing the foundation, we have a lot of the original electrical, so upgrading the electrical. Um, when we get heavy rain, sometimes we get some rain coming in certain parts of the building. So kind of regrading some of the landscaping to improve drainage, uh new flooring, it needs a new roof. Um, windows, we desperately probably need a new security system, ADA upgrades, and our elevators original as well. So it's a very old elevator that needs upgrade. The community center has a lot more conversation around it maybe than the other projects, because you know, there in decisions to be made. The first one would be you can upgrade and renovate the current building. And again, it's built in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, we could also explore, does it make more sense to tear it down and build a new facility? Um, or we could do nothing, you know, and not do anything either for this building. Some of the considerations though is parking at Augsburg Park in that we have a, you know, medium-sized lot that's pretty busy when we have a program there and we have our playground and just peak general park users. The park is also protected under the land and wa- water conservation um program federally, the LawCon grant, so you can't build out. We're kind of stuck with that pad. So even if we wanted to tear it down and, you know, build a community center that has gyms and things, I don't know spatially we could do that. Um, and we wouldn't have the the authority to extend the parking lot either into the park. So things to consider, um, and I don't, you know, and this quote is eight point seven million, just to kind of bring the building up to um general improvements. But also I think it'd be helpful, you know, for council and mayor to make a decision to get a quote, what would it cost to tear down and build something new? Um, I don't think spatially that it would be a community center, you know, that would have an indoor pool and weight room and all that. Um, we have to see architecturally what you could fit on that pad. But that would be something I think that could be helpful for this conversation, what direction to go at the community center. And those are the the main projects. Uh, a team of us put these together. Um, looking in from Public Works that do a lot of park maintenance and our leadership team in recreation and just looking at our highest needs um that we see and also that we're hearing from residents and putting this together. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Uh, I'm gonna share some comments, Simon, and then I'll jump back to you. Um, so I wanted to share a few comments. Now that I'll be out of office, I think I'm gonna start creating Richfield bumper stickers and then the proceeds can go to this, but one of the things that you said, um, I was like, that's a bumper sticker. Um, and it's something like it's built in nineteen sixty-one and it's, or it was built in nineteen sixty-one, dot, dot, dot. It's original. Uh, but that's Richfield in a, in a nutshell in some ways. Um, and so my comments, so again, this is really going to be the leadership of of the council and the makeup of the council next year. But from my perspective, I just wanted to say I'm in full support of doing this for so many different reasons and making the decision if we're going to do this, just like we have in other situations like organized hauling. If we're gonna do this, let's do it all at once and let's do it right. So I'm I'm using that to speak to, you know, ten, fifteen or twenty years. I think if we're gonna think, consider this, thinking about um the longest possible time we have um to do this, because there's clearly a lot of different um things that we we really need to invest in, and I think this is a great option. I have some questions about the funding mechanisms and things, but I think they're a little too granular. And again, maybe more for the following, the next council. But what I really want to say is this is, this is a great list, um, and I'm in support of the list. And so what I see in this list is the what, the things, this physical tangible things in our community, in our park system that needs up, that need to be updated. Um, but I really feel like it would be a huge missed opportunity for our full community in our city to also not think about, and and I'm not saying this is what's happening, but I really would love for us to think about what is the vision and what is this about? Because we're really looking at a lot of these things are are in the original states that we've been taking great care of. But now we're reimagining our parks and our green spaces for the next twenty to fifty years. And so that is what this referendum is also about in this um update. And so I, it made me think of um Sweet Streets and how there's some guiding principles along um with Sweet Streets. And we think about what is the community engagement component look like? Um, I would love to make sure that we're taking key concepts, like what does it mean to embed equity across all of this work and access very tangibly? What does that look like? It means that all of our signage is going to be in these different languages. Um, it means that it's going to be ADA compliant or above that, because ADA compliance is really a minimum bar. Um, but really looking at equity, looking at inclusion in the concept of I'm creating community. How are these updates going to foster and create connectivity and community? Um, what does it mean to embed sustainability in our climate work in this, in these updates as well? Um, but what are those guiding principles? I think we have an awesome playbook already with Sweet Streets and again, taking that concept and applying it to this. And then of course, um, the community involvement in informing what that means, because everybody experiences our parks um in a very personal way and making sure that they have the possibility to to weigh in on that. So, um, that was one of the biggest things is having a bigger vision and a plan. Because again, this is not just necessarily updates to the facilities, but it's really about recreating and refreshing our most beloved um community gathering spaces. And then let's do this right in the sense of thinking about um how we make sure it's accessible, it's welcoming, and we're opening up these spaces for everybody. Because the last time so many of these things were invested in, maybe they weren't ADA compliant, maybe they weren't included. Um, and so we have an opportunity to to do that differently and to set a gold standard, not just for our community, but for a bunch of different communities. And then the last, the other item I was gonna say was, um, I'm glad to see that you're looking at adding room rental spaces. So again, where it makes sense, I would love to see to the point of building community. Um, as everybody knows, people want more rentable community spaces in Richfield. This is an opportunity to do that, but it's also an opportunity to get another revenue stream. It might not be huge. But is there another um kind of shelter or, you know, different sized shelters within this that we could consider? Outdoor shelters like the one in Veterans Park that is literally booked uh every single summer. Um, in that Donaldson Park, there's a, there's a room, you know, that you're considering. But are there things like that, again, where community members can rent um outdoor space and indoor space to 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 help um with with providing more of those spaces that we really don't have? So I think those are the main comments um I wanted to say to to think about incorporating in this plan. Um, Simon.
Thank you. Uh, thank you both for the the thorough list and the really thoughtful uh notes. I see you have skinny notes, so it's almost all from memory. Um, so great job. Uh, I, uh, two, two comments. Um, one, I I just, um, this summer I've been walking a lot through our our neighbor to the west in Edina, through their their park system. And they've made a lot of strategic investments in tying walkable space to nature, to commerce in ways that is parks and recs have really driven a lot of um ecological development and commercial development. Um, and so as as you think about this list, um, we have an opportunity and we think about the 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 level of dollars we're gonna be putting into our community to at this stage, um, even though I know it's it's always late in the stage. But to to do some bigger thinking about if if we're going to to ask from our citizens to make those really big uh institutional commitments, to think about how we can tie all those components together uh in even greater ways. And I know if there's one thing when we're looking at a price tag like this, that seniors uh in my ward will ask me about, it's about uh a place where they can walk indoors. And if it's one thing that um parents with families will ask me about, it's a community center. We have no field house uh with our school. And I know that's always a heavy lift or near impossible lift for the school. It's a near heavy lift or impossible lift for us alone. And so even though that's really big and that's not, at some, at some point, if we're gonna make really huge investments, um, and this isn't the number one, I would say that's the number one thing that I'll get from both seniors and um and families with kids. Um, maybe not number one with business owners, but lots of folks like our mayor mentioned really earnestly want community gathering spaces that's better for more than fifty people. And so we're talking about some of the biggest investments we're gonna make in our community in the next generation or two. Um, and and so I would, I would just ask, please, consider that. Think outside the box. Think of our partners at the school board. Um, and I'd love to see investments in that direction.
Thank you, Simon. I think that goes um to the point, you know, that I was trying to make too, and I forgot to add one about the community center. Again, the community center is like a very specific what, and we may or may not be able to do this specific vision of a community center. But that doesn't mean that we can't advance a concept of a community center. And and I know you've talked about that before, Amy. Um, looking at our facilities across the community of Richfield to say, what are those components of a community center that people really want? And then what are all the different ways to address that? So I think it's to that point, like, there's the pieces of the of the infrastructure that need to be updated, but there's so much more and kind of making plans with the community of what is that so much more? Um, and how do we think outside of the box through this process to make that happen? Great. Other comments or questions? Sean?
Uh, just to kind of, I overall feel good about the list. Um, I have questions about the park trail system improvements specifically, because the law had that very specific language of contiguous trail or one specific park. So I'm thrilled by the idea of being able to like just go fix all our park trails, but how is that, how does that comply with the requirement? Does that be a contiguous trail?
Well, I don't know. I was looking at a lot of our trails that connect into our regional trail, like Adams Hill or Richfield Lake. They're, they're circular. I mean, they, they're continuous and then they connect in and go out. I mean, continues on. It doesn't just end nowhere. Um, I think regionally significant that they're connectors. Um, people are using them that are using the regional trails, jumping on our trail system. And that's my take of it.
Yeah, I misunderstood what you're saying. I thought Katie just meant like you're voting on one trail as opposed to like a package of trails. But by that, I'm literally reacting to the word, not any detailed knowledge of it. So if that is possible, I like that. And it almost disappoints me that that's a lower priority, but I know they're all, they're all high priorities. Um, I I think our trail conditions are unfortunately pretty, pretty bad and pretty inconsistent. So I love how many times you said just like consistent signage of just like the quality of our trails, whether it's lighting, whether it's ADA compliance, whether it's the surface quality, is just this complete, you know, wild card. And just in general, this idea that I like Maria referenced Sweet Streets and that like we have a Richfield standard for streets. We know what to expect and a standard of quality. And I don't feel like our parks are there yet. And I think with this, if we were to go forward with this and sort of pass, this would bring our parks to a Richfield standard for our parks, um, with these major investments. So I definitely support it. And I really like the idea of though, although we would be bringing it to the voters as individual projects. It, you know, it's only moving us towards one, you know, a more significant vision for our parks. And I I do raise the R six, so I'm gonna, since we we could all eventually require it, I want to really emphasize, I do think if the park trail system improvement thing is possible, I think that is important because it would touch more of the community. The other thing I just want to raise that I've mentioned to Katie in the past is it's just a sense of like how much planning could go into this and and how much I'd like to see of like, even I think of examples of like at Veterans Parks, like we know the trails are in bad condition, but like if we had eight million dollars, like do we know where the new trails go? Like they're kind of like duplicate trail routes. Some of them are very narrow, some of them are wider. So that level of like detailed planning of like, we know what the future of the park would look like, I I think would be helpful to make sure that we're acting cohesively. One other question I have about the community center, you said we have to stay within the current pad. I believe that's a concern I raised last year when we accepted that condition. But uh, is that the total pad of like all the current, like can we take some of the parking lot and make it a regular building? Or does it have to stay like the building has to stay outside, the parking lot has to stay outside?
That I don't know. I know we can't encroach into parkland. It has to be only for outdoor recreation use. Um, that's a good question.
Um, because it does, just as an idea, if that were a priority, I would want to stay with that building. Potentially using more of that and finding like additional parking in the right of way or like adding, you know, bump up parking inside Seventieth Street or something. Like I hope there'd be other ways to do it. And then a final comment, just to note, I don't know how much of the totals they are, but seeing parking lots repeatedly is disappointing, although that is functionally important. We need to maintain our assets. I would hope that we not expand any of our existing park parking lots. And if there is any spot where there's excessive parking, to reduce that, to reduce our maintenance costs long term. There, you know, parkland is is not not best served in asphalt, so whatever we can minimize it, that's a good thing.
Any other comments? Okay, does staff have the direction and kind of the guidance from the work session that you were hoping to get?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I did want to clarify, when I originally asked for feedback, I was ac- actually, there's, there's two questions when it comes to twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. One of the questions is, do you want to include it in the twenty twenty-three legislative platform or twenty-four? Because we could wait till twenty twenty-four and do some more engagement around these projects and get some more details. We don't need a really detailed list for the legislature. That is pretty high level, um, and we will continue to refine the projects as we, as we go along. And and certainly if we get the authority, we would do that. Or, but there's risks with that, because if we don't, you know, if we wait till the twenty twenty-four legislature and for some reason, um, they adjourn without taking up the tax bill, then we would not be able to bring it to the voters in twenty twenty-four. So is there, are there any thoughts on that? Are you comfortable proceeding to twenty twenty-three?
Sean?
Yeah, I prefer twenty twenty-three. Um, I think also just mixing it up in a presidential election year, that's likely to be just a little bit more thinking about this issue more towards the center.
And mayor and council, um, even if we do bring it to the legislature and take it up to twenty twenty-three, um, we do have the opportunity to change or amend anything in twenty twenty-four if we feel like it to. Um, so we are not, you know, it's good to get that out there, good to get that approved, so we kind of keep moving forward, but we do have some flexibility too.
Any feedback on twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Agreed. Twenty twenty-three, absolutely.
That was, that was good. So, um, and just a reminder that these projects, what we're giving you here are the project costs. It is not the additional cost if they were financed with bonding. So that could add anywhere from thirty to seventy-five percent of additional cost. So we will, now we've got that feedback on the possible project cost, we'll continue to refine that um and also look at possible financing options. So thank you. Um, I think we have what we need. Amy, do you feel like you have what you need?
Yeah.
Kristen Kamud. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will adjourn our meeting.